All right. Good afternoon. We'll go ahead and get started with this February ninth, two thousand and twenty-three meeting of the Escondido Library Board of Trustees. Any correspondence, Doc?
No.
Okay. Would it, does anyone have any changes to make to the minutes from last month?
I move approval.
I second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion approved, five zero.
Okay, great. All right, so we're talking about strategic plan go, goals in section two, embracing emerging services.
Yes, so we have some updates in these sections. For our first strategy section, education or educate residents about modern library services. The first objective, create understanding among residents that libraries are places to connect with the community. We do send out our monthly newsletters, one for youth services and one for adult services every month, and update the public on event, events through our social media. We also reach out to community members by sending a welcome, well, we would like to also reach out to our new community members by sending a welcome newsletter, and we're working with the city to find a way to do that. The next strategy to raise awareness of our services. The LSNS marketing is reviewing demographic user groups to more accurately share information. So we're trying to use library IQ to better target groups based on our programs and services. And we encourage reading. It's an ongoing part of our collection development. We have just started planning for our summer reading challenge that will run from June twelfth to July thirtieth. And to provide personalized service by creating reading suggestions. In January, we launched What Should I Read Next?, which is a webpage that includes staff collections and curated reading lists. We also provide a live readers advisory service for patrons called Book Chat, which is powered by Novelist. We, to improve offerings to our Spanish speakers, our adult service staff has been doing a full inventory of the adult Spanish collection, and a display with low, our lower circulating Spanish fiction has been created in February, and a nonfiction display will be done in March and April. For the strategy of supporting early literacy and education, supporting parents as children, our children's first teachers by offering parent education programs is really the whole reason we have our family literacy program. They educate parents on the importance of early literacy and also give them techniques and practices to do at home to continue developing those skills. Help prepare children for kindergarten. We still have a thousand books before kindergarten, and we have currently six hundred ninety-nine registered participants in that program. Our next strategy, introduce, introduce and innovate. We are currently working on supporting adults and teens by providing four life skill programs. Our adult services department plans to offer an estate planning workshop in the fall of this year. For the strategy of providing access and new and existing technology, we're working on supporting the tech, the adoption of tech by providing one-on-one tech instructions, two days each month. We currently offer this on a walk-in basis, but we want to make it a more formalized program where people feel comfortable knowing like, oh, if I drop in on Tuesday, and then we can also have staff available so that if it runs more than the fifteen or twenty-minute timeframe, they'll be able to not, not have to worry about that because they'll have the staff available. We are working to figure out how to fund equity by providing laptops and Wi-Fi hotspots for circulation. We'll be looking into grant possibilities, but we don't have any applications out right now on the horizon. And offering services beyond the library walls. Increase impact by taking reading programs out into the communities. We have some plans for that coming up in the next fiscal year. We are working with the San Diego Air and Space Museum, which would be in addition to our San Diego Children's Museums, children's programming. But we're also working to have, with the Air and Space Museum, they have a bookmobile. So we're hoping to have them come out on Thursdays in the summer because that's, or in the spring while school's still in session because they have early release dates on Thursday. So we're working to get that rolling. And then in terms of leverage efficiency by partnering with the city parks and recreation, we can, can contribute content to the quarterly Escondido Recreation Guide. The next one comes out in March. In two thousand and twenty-two, the Recreation Department donated free pool passes as a partner in our summer reading challenge, and we look forward to this participation in two thousand and twenty-three. To provide pickup of materials throughout the community, to reduce travel distance. Luckily, you know, that's a fiscal year two thousand and twenty-four goal, but that is something we're going to have to figure out financially, how we can make that feasible. There's also some parts of that that we have to figure out with how staff can go out and liability issues as well. But we are still working away on our strategic plan, slowly but surely.
Any questions?
When we do the estate planning, do we have an attorney that volunteers to help us with that?
Yes, we have an attorney that we asked if they would be willing to do the program, and she agreed, so.
That's really good.
Yeah.
I'm very pleased.
It is a goal for our programs to try and have some more informative sessions. We've had a lot of craft-heavy sessions in the past, and it's, we're working more in that direction of not only history for the, you know, it's his, the city of Escondido history for people, that information piece. Or last year, we did the Caesar Chavez Day. We are trying to get more to an informative while still keeping some fun craft programs as well.
Will, will that go out in some kind of a, so, I mean, I think there are a lot of people that would like to have this support who can't many times afford it, who would come if, if there's information that goes out.
That, it will go out in our e-newsletter and be advertised on our social media outlets. We could also do a press release.
Good.
Okay, I'm just, maybe this would be nitpicking. On the adult server, the estate planning. Okay, we had that in the strategic plan for twenty-five through twenty-seven. And you're two years ahead of schedule. That's because you, you saw a need and you have the capability?
You know, we are often in meetings or brainstorming with staff and, or a possibility comes across our path, and we're just like, oh, that fits the strategic plan. So we don't really pay attention to the year. And certainly as it approaches, if we don't, we haven't been making progress in those categories, we're going to panic and proactively look for those things. But when we have things show up and they're in our strategic plan, we go ahead and jump on them because it's a start, right?
Okay, well, no, I totally, totally agree. If you got something that's, that's there, why wait? But alternatively, if there are things that are supposed to be done this year and next year that you're having trouble addressing, getting, getting them done, would you come back to us and say, hey, I'm doing this early, can I do this late? Is that, or you, you don't?
Try not to, but.
I, I know you.
That might be a saving grace if we fall short in a category. But no, we're going to try and keep moving forward and meeting them all.
Okay, and on the one for collection budget, which is this year, would it be possible to get an update at some future meeting on how that works? You know, what type of analytics you're using?
You mean for our collection development for the books?
Mm-hmm. Yeah, for.
I thought we had that slated to be like at the end of the, the fiscal year. Didn't we do, how did we decide to do that? I think it's an April annual report, like, starting last year.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, I remember that, but you're, you're saying leveraging library IQ analytic data. Is that, that's more of a, explaining the tool than, than, explaining that, how you're using the tool. Do you want, you want to just do that in April? Or is that, or does that just add too much to the collection plan review?
It's not real, I mean, certainly we'd be happy to walk through it with you, but we're not working on it at this point in time. LSNS HQ is helping us through the collection management team pay attention over the course of the year because I, I think we talked about when we added Polaris in August of two thousand and nineteen. It takes almost three years to get really strong data to guide our purchase requests and also what our community is preferring in our collection development. So we're really not to three years, even though it's two thousand and twenty-three because we were interrupted by COVID. So that's where we are with that. We're also using it to, to look at additional numbers and targeting populations for advertising. That's what this piece was referring to.
Okay. Well, is that something we can take a look at at some future meeting?
I'd have to have somebody else. I, we can have, I think we have Heidi on our agenda for like April, and she's going to talk about library IQ.
Okay.
HQ, but that's kind of getting into the weeds, so.
I know, we're supposed to be top-level people.
Yeah, well, that's okay. We can find out anything you're interested in that aspect. If you have specific questions, I can pop them up to the collection management team and ask them.
So wait, sorry, John, you're wondering how the collection management team is using library IQ to define their collection plan. Is that?
Correct.
Okay, and Dara, you said that library IQ is just one facet of it because.
Yeah, we understand.
I don't know, I understand that.
I mean, ultimately, you're asking a question that I'm not even that much into the weeds of library IQ. So if you want to know that better than me, you're welcome to. But we're taking feedback based on what our collection management team is seeing, but also our marketing team.
Yes.
And then using what the marketing team finds to help us better target.
So I think, I, I don't know, John, I don't want to speak for you, but it sounds like what John is looking for is just like the methodology you're using as of right now to develop your collection plan.
Right, and I don't know.
We don't know.
That is our LSNS HQ marketing team, and they're developing, I guess, markers and how, I don't even know the details of what they're measuring to determine, but it is something we know they're working on and will be giving us feedback on later in spring.
Okay, well, it might be a good topic then for Heidi, right? It's just to give us a.
Yeah.
Just an overview.
Yeah, and it doesn't have to, yeah, and it doesn't have to happen in April, just, just, you know, sometime this year.
I think we're just interested.
Yeah.
Okay.
More than anything. I mean, I am, just like, oh, that's interesting, cool. How do you do it? What's your process, basically?
Yeah.
Yeah, the other thing as well is on our website, we do have both the collection development plan and the collection development policy that you guys approved, I believe, two years ago. And that really kind of goes in depth into certain areas that we target in our collection, and we have that on our review cycle every, I think, two to three years. So, I mean, if you want kind of like the overview of what we look at and how, that's probably a good place to start. But yeah, as far as like the library Q metrics, it's definitely like.
Above.
Yeah, that's like, it's a whole department utilizing that system to.
In your headquarters.
Predict, yeah.
Okay, I'll send Heidi an email. How's that?
Or you can email me and I can share it with Heidi.
Okay, if that's what you want to do, I'll.
That'd be the best way, yeah.
All right.
Go ahead.
On, um, I have to find it. On the supporting adults and teens by providing life skills programs, are you guys planning to do that as an in-person session only?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
Okay, so on the programs for providing adult and teens, like life skills programs, are those sessions planned for in-person only, like the estate planning one that's coming up?
Oh, into, okay. Oh, what are you, sorry, I'm having a hard, I'm not hearing you, and I was trying to figure out where we were at.
Okay, so are those programs going to be offered in-person only?
Yes, they will be predominantly in-person. The only things I think that are going to live in the hybrid world are going to be our book clubs.
Okay, is it, I'm just curious, is it a possibility to record the session for the, like, the estate planner and then post it on the website? Because I'm wondering if those programs are going to be valuable to our community, but they all might not be able to attend at the date and time that was proposed. So it'd be awesome to have an online library of those life skill presentations that people could go back to.
And that we'll have to address with each presenter, depending on whether or not they're willing to let us post it on our website.
Okay.
So I haven't asked her at this point in time.
Okay, just a consideration.
Yeah.
I just have a follow-up question on that, Virginia. So, so how will you find the presenters or how will they be selected for, because I see different things in here? Financial literacy and sewing and things like that.
So that all goes through, well, for literacy, that goes through our literacy department. Otherwise.
Financial literacy.
What's?
Financial literacy.
Financial literacy?
For example.
Like, how would we find that? If anyone was interested in giving that kind of program, sometimes we receive emails, and we'll reach out, have a conversation with the person, and find out if they've maybe presented at another library. A lot of times we'll call other libraries to see who they've used for presenters.
And sewing, for example?
What's that?
Sewing.
Sewing, yeah, it would just depend. We get a lot just randomly emailed to us, and then we'll evaluate that. We talk to other libraries. That's another way we receive things, or we'll think of a program specifically, like we have a Persian New Year celebration coming up in March. That's something we specifically pursue through the Persian Cultural Center. It's a wide variety. There's no one answer to that.
All right, thank you.
Anything else? Thank you. All right, over to you, Katie, for Pioneer Room software for digitization.
Okay, so quite a few of you have been to the Pioneer Room. I highly recommend you visit if you have not. It is our historical archive that really showcases the history of Escondido. And as such, there are over, there are thousands of historical photos, print photos, that have been donated over the past, you know, thirty years. And one of our big initiatives is to digitize them and make them available online for people who are looking for specific photos, right? And then we also entered into the MOU with the Escondido History Center. And part of that is additionally making, because we have a lot of crossover, right? So we have a lot of photos on topics that they also have photos or other materials on. And we have this, you know, we want to make it as easy as possible for anyone doing research on the history of Escondido to access both collections because, you know, we're a couple blocks apart, our hours are different. And doing so digitally not only protects the physical photographs, but also gives them kind of an aggregate location that can find things all at one time. So we have done a lot of research, myself, Ashley Hayes, and Aspen Hill, into the different archival digital platforms because there are certain elements that you need to have to meet archival standards, such as like the, the file type of storage, certain metadata that is required for cataloging, et cetera. And after doing three or four different demos and talking to different vendors, we came to the conclusion that we would prefer to use WorldCat's Content DM software. It's been around for over ten years. It's really solid software. Almost all the local libraries use it if they have an archival collection. San Diego Public uses it, San Diego County uses it, a lot of universities use it. San Jose State, where I got my master's, that was what they used as well, so we trained on that. And it's nice because they have a good staff that can keep everything up, that is responsive, and will assist us in any of the issues with the website. So we're looking to request the, the amount of money from the Pioneer Room line item in the trust for the first two years of subscription cost. And also it includes the startup fees for the platform, and it would be a total of around fourteen thousand dollars. Yes, it's expensive.
Couple of questions. The, so it's, you're mainly going to be scanning pictures?
Yes, historical photographs.
In round numbers, just how many?
Thousands. We have three or four collections that have already been completely like physically cataloged with like paper finding aids, and I think at least two of those collections easily has like two thousand photos. And we have many unprocessed collections that we're trying to get through.
Okay. And how much is set up and what's the yearly fee?
The yearly fee right now is around sixty-two hundred dollars. I, I thought I had pasted the full invoice in there. I apologize. It's, it's like, like sixty-two hundred, so it's like the quote is actually for like thirteen, sixteen-something, and I just wanted to do up to fourteen thousand in case there's any additional fees that. Because now the quote's been kind of hanging out for a while, and so depending on when and if it gets approved, it can go up slightly. But yeah, so that's for two years, and it's just something we really are looking to do. We want to recruit some students from Cal State San Marcos's history department to help us with the digitization.
Okay, so after the two years, is the city going to pick up as, as part of the, the normal expenses of running the library?
We do have money in our budget that we can use for this in future years. However, I would like to explore grant options or potentially, at least for the first five to six years, utilizing a combination of trust funding from you guys or potentially from the Pioneer Room friends as well, some hybrid thereof. Because we know that this, I, I don't remember if there's a year, like, duration on the MOU, but I want to, it was five years. So we're looking to at least cover the first five years, but they'll only bill me for two years at a time.
Okay, if we decide, let, let's say the library trust fund goes broke, or you get a bunch of tightwads in here in a couple of years, and they won't give you the money, what happens to your pictures that have been digitized? Are they still available to you?
They will be like, the, the company will still hold the digital, and we will get like backup copies of them locally that we can have on like hard drives. But we won't have the functionality of the search that we have with their software platform. And that's pretty standard across any proprietary software you find.
Okay, that's all the questions I had.
Yes, we can migrate it. If we do choose to, we can migrate it to a different software if we want to.
President Clement, may I, may I just, I just have one quick question. I'm so sorry to interject on this. It's somewhat germane. But I, I didn't know, we have a, in our office, we do all the digitization of the records for the city, and we have a scanning station, and we have the backup on Questus. I don't know, is the quote primarily for the service itself or the manpower to do it? Because if so, if you guys need the actual like infrastructure, we potentially could provide that here. I just wanted to let you know, but I don't know if that's stepping into.
So, okay, so to kind of clarify as much as I can, we have the scanners. We have the scanners, we have the people who know how to do it, and we've been in many talks over the last three years with the InfoSIS department because of the amount of space it would take to store. And the city does not have the infrastructure to store the number of photos we want. And the reason that we went with this product as opposed to some of the less expensive products is because not only will they store our photos, but they have like archival level preservation of like redundant backups, which is, it, I believe they're one of the few companies that is, got the gold seal of the Society of American Archivists. So they also will set up our website and take care of all of that for us. Whereas some of these other ones, our staff will be responsible for setting up the website, setting up a lot of the backend, and we don't have the manpower or knowledge to do so. And InfoSIS also does not have the ability to do so. We had a couple of meetings about it. So at this point, the, the request from them was to look for a vendor that would take care of all of those pieces for us. But thank you, Zach, I appreciate that.
Do we maintain ownership of the material?
Yeah, I mean, the, the Pioneer Room is the like copyright holder.
Okay.
Of anything that's donated unless there's a very specific donation verbiage, but I'm pretty sure that we own the copyright to most of the photographs. Or of course, the History Center for their photographs as well.
Just to confirm, we are not looking to the History Center to help contribute in any way to this?
Not at this time.
I'm sorry, and this is a five-year commitment that you, that we're, that the, the city is making?
The, the city has made the commitment with the Escondido History Center to maintain our partnership for five years. I am asking for the first two years of costs for the product with the intention to utilize the trust to pay for those five years. And then after those five years, I would be able to either revisit with the History Center and a joint payment situation, potentially move some. Yeah, talk to the Pioneer Room friends because that's another one. And then the other option, as well as you know, is to potentially move some things around in our regular collection development budget. However, that, that is a bit trickier because if we move money around, we will lose something else.
But that's after the first five years, or is it after the first two years you can do?
Well, I wanted them to, to give me the invoice for five years so we could just pay it, and it's done. But they only bill on a two, like, oh, they prefer to bill on a one-year cycle, but they can bill on a two-year cycle. So I could only get an invoice for the first two years. So what I'm asking for today is the cost for the first two years with the intention to come back after those two years and ask for the next two years, and then after those two years, come back for one year. And then after that five-year period is done, I would, we would, we'd have better analytical data to decide how that's working out, what our photos look like, where, where we could potentially find additional funding, et cetera.
Could we ask some of the other agencies to pitch in after the first two years as well, or no?
I could, absolutely. I just, I'm just letting you know.
As an option?
Yeah, what my thought process was, yeah.
Exactly.
Heidi, this is a big issue. There's some very powerful people in this town that want this to happen. I, I had, had a guy take me to lunch to tell me that. And I think that it's a very healthy thing for our library to do because of the support we're going to get from these people. Now, I think after two years, first of all, the question I have is in two years, won't we have most of the backlog digitized? We won't?
No.
Okay.
We, we currently, the Pioneer Room is currently open twelve hours a week? Twenty hours, twenty hours a week, and it is staffed by two people. And those two people are dealing with questions coming in. There, there are managing volunteers that are already doing other projects in there. Ashley Hayes and Aspen Hill are the primaries, and they do have a backlog of projects. But due to just the needs of the patrons and other things, it's like, you know, they do programs in there, they do, they're going to be doing a genealogy workshop. So, I mean, they're a department run by like really one and a half people, and they're only dedicating half of their working hours a week to the Pioneer Room. The, the goal with this is to recruit the students from Cal State San Marcos who are in doing history and archival work to help us with the digitization part of that. But depending on how much we can, how many hours people can donate a week, you know, like, we could get a fair amount of it done quickly. It might, I, I, I estimate it will take a while, and then archives are an ever-growing, you know? We have an entity, I missed a word there. We're constantly getting new donations all the time. And so that's one of those things that I think is just going to be ongoing.
Well, I, I do think that we ought to be looking for grants to maybe see if we can find something that would support this. But I think after we could show some of the people that I'm thinking of what has happened with the digitization, we might have some people that are willing to, to cough up some money to support us. we might have some people that are willing to, to cough up some money to support us. I know that the Historical Society, it's, it's kind of always been a struggle. It's all by volunteer donations and they're struggling. But they got some people in that group that could, could pay for this whole thing. And so I think if once we can show them the development, we may get even some more support.
So, so I guess, at this point, what is our, like how many photos have we already digitized? Like from a terabyte or megabyte perspective?
We have approximately 1.5 gigabytes that are digitized. However, part of this project will have to, because they were done years ago, we will want to re-digitize them at a higher resolution and a better file type that's lossless. Because right now they're currently in like a JPEG format, which is, you know, it's really easy for them to get corrupted, so.
What is the, what is the storage limit for the 6,200 per year?
It is 50 gigabytes. Maybe 100 gigabytes.
Is it, a gigabyte is less than a terabyte, right?
Yeah. Yeah, but I mean, it will take us quite a while to get to 50 gigabytes.
Yeah. I guess, so my concern right is the amount of, is showing like a return on investment.
Right.
So spending the 6,200 at the end of that year, how many photos will we have there, right? And then that, I mean, 50 gigabytes seems to be quite low for the, like, just the, when you think of storage in general, like you can get, you know, I don't know. Obviously I don't want to compare this to Google or Apple storage. But yeah, like it, I'm just wondering, is it like a, what is it that we're paying for if it's not for the storage level?
You're paying for the storage level, but you're also paying for the level of, you're, you're paying for a couple of things. You're paying for someone who's going to create this website for us with all of the backend infrastructure we're asking them for in order so that we can watermark our photos, has all of the metadata fields we're requiring. It's going to look and feel the same as our website so that it's going to look as close as possible. It is going to have the storage, but that storage isn't just AWS or Google where you're, you've just, you're paying for a ter, like I pay for like a terabyte of Google and it's like a hundred dollars a year. But those servers live somewhere and somebody does a backup every like month or so. And it's not, the type of files that are going to be stored and the way that they are cared for in a digital environment i- is very specific. So digital archiving has, just like any, I'm sorry, I'm really lacking words today. They have very specific standards, right? So think about Library of Congress, okay? You have these photos from like the 1920s, the 1890s. These are one-of-a-kind photos, it's the only photo that exists of this thing. And that physical photograph is deteriorating, right? So the more it's exposed to light, the more it's scanned, the more it's touched, the less time it has on its roster. So what you want to do is you want to create a digital copy of that photograph that is in as high resolution in a TIFF format, which is lossless, which means that it, it doesn't take pieces of it out to compress the file size. And you want to use that as your master so that when Mirek asks for a copy of it printed on a poster or Virginia asks for a digital copy of it for her website, we can make copies from that original and it doesn't deteriorate the original. And then that one-of-a-kind photograph where the original might be completely like beyond repair is backed up on a very regular basis. It has a lot of built-in infrastructure to check and make sure you're not losing any data, you're not having any corruption to the file. Because once that file is destroyed, that photo may be gone forever, right? So that is kind of the generic overview of what that looks like and why it tends to be more expensive to archive photo, like historical archival level photographs or music or any of that than it is like my Google Drive.
So this database is searchable?
Yes. And it's online.
It, so when, when you say it's online, is it only going to be able to access when you're in the Pioneer Room or out in public?
It will be like on the, the internet.
Okay.
And anyone can go search for it and anyone can say like, oh, I'm doing a research project on Frances Bevan Ryan, right? And I live in Michigan. Okay, cool, check out our website here and you can just type Frances Bevan Ryan. You'll see like not only photos of her, but also her collections she donated. And we're looking to put a fair amount of level of detail into the photos we have that for so that it is more comprehensive. It'll show up in Google searches. And then people who are researching between the Pioneer Room and the History Center, they're just going to one place to find all the photos of that one thing instead of having to go bounce, bounce back and forth.
So I have a question on the funding. So I, I hear you that the vote today is to decide if we're committed to spending about $35,000 on this five-year program.
Yes.
And that is the most we'll spend and hopefully it's less with grants and things like that.
Okay, got it. But I need money to get started.
Yeah, I got it.
Yeah, so it's really, it's more like, okay, like optimally, I wanted, I wanted to just be like five years. That's the MOU that covers everything and we'll see where we're at at that point. And my hope Ron was exactly what you were saying, that enough people will be interested and excited about it that we'll get some kind of grants or donations or other funding.
I, I think, I think what we need to do is, and we can't do it right now, but after a year or so, we need to go out in the community and let people know what's been done and show them how they can access it. Then some of these people that are longtime Escondidans who have all, have, have plenty of money would probably be willing to help us. But we can't get them to do it until we can show them the product or a little bit of the product. And so I think we need to not only get this started, but we need to also be thinking of a marketing plan once we have enough to take out. I mean, I'd love to have this presented at the Rotary Club because there's a lot of people in there that are longtime Escondidans that would love to see this. But we can't do it until we have enough to present.
Right.
And, and we need to get, you know, and the history group needs to understand totally what's happening and what we're doing. And, because they, they're very interested in doing it, but we need, we need them to know that down the road, we're going to need some support.
Yeah, exactly.
So my question for that though is, what is, so we're talking about $35,000 commitment at the most. What is the Pioneer Room line item available balance right now?
I believe when I looked at it, it was like 60,000.
Okay, so we're talking about.
Forty thousand. I was talking about doing as much as possible, but also too, the Pioneer Room friends have something similar, like 39,000 as well. So my hope was that between you all and the, and the Pioneer Room friends, we'd be able to kind of get this off the ground, at least for that five years, yeah.
Thank you.
Again, if I may, so we're talking about five years commitment or just paying two years upfront now? And, and, because I, obviously it's something that needs to be done and, and, and I'm, I'm positive that, you know, I trust you that you did your research and you, you found the best possible company to handle that and help us with it. The question is, we paying and I'm, I'm okay with that for the first two years. And just like Ron said, can we approach the community after two years? So we don't have to spend $31,000, but only 14, possibly a little bit more and get the rest from the community or from grants or from different sources?
Absolutely. You can pass the motion as just committing to the first invoice, the first one year, the first two years. We're looking to get this off the ground. We have a couple of other possibilities where we know the money exists that we could go to in lieu of not getting approval to use it from the trust. But we will also be going after grants and we can, with approval from the city, potentially do a fundraising type of event. But we are back to, it's that chicken egg piece where we want something to present to keep the.
Right, well, how, how about this? If we were to approve the $14,000 now, what if we want a commitment from you guys that when, that when it comes up for renewal in two years, you're not going to come back to us for anything more than 50%? Somewhere between zero and 50%.
Absolutely, because that gives us time to come up with that on our end as well. So certainly we could do something like that.
And show some results for the first two years.
Absolutely. You guys can set the parameters on that and we'll get creative to work within them.
Yeah. I think my concern right is the space, number one, because it sounds like we have thousands of photos and they're going to take up a lot more space than a normal photo would. So being able to show at the end of a year, the community, how many photos do we have? Like what is searchable, how many, how many do we have? And then two, understanding that the, the cost could go up significantly depending on the storage amount, right? So if we are very successful in our first year, we have a bunch of volunteers that come and they do this and they get 2,000 photos in there. And that's our limit, that's our cap. And we have 15,000 photos to go, you know, this could get a lot more expensive. So we would just need to understand that.
So, so you're talking about potential hardware requirements versus the software?
No, I'm talking about the price will go up because we would need more storage.
More storage, okay.
So, and then two, you know, what is our cost per photo? Like is it a dollar per photo? Are we, you know, so I think, I'm in support of providing the funding for the first two years. I think this is, I think we've needed this for a long time. I totally support the effort. I think we're going to have to be very careful in how we market this, right? Like, and have people understand, you know, the benefit versus the cost. I would be interested in seeing what the cost, how the cost changes depending on the amount of storage that you're purchasing.
Sorry, I'm looking for the initial quote in my email. They do have, you can do add-on storage. You can pay per, I believe, 100 gigabytes once you hit your cap. And then that's just part of your annual renewal. It is not inexpensive, but I cannot get to my email. So I can't tell you what that is. And honestly, things have changed so much from when I was in library school. I graduated in 2011 and I did a project of photo digitization. But due to new scanning technology and other elements, I'm not really going to know what the ratio is until I
Get some.
Get a couple done, right? And the other issue with that as well is, I mean, for example, we have one gigabyte right now, which is miniscule by today's standards. And those were scanned at like, you know, a middle, a middle grade. And they're at least like five or 600 photos. So even if you cut that in half, like three to 400 for one gigabyte, I mean, in a year, I'm going to be really happy if we get to 500 photographs with the requisite cataloguing as well. Because it's not just scanning the photo and putting it in there, it's making it findable. So it's, it's including metadata, where is this photo taken? Who is it taken of? What year was it taken?
So do we then need that level of storage? Could we reduce the price if we only go with five? Because you're only going to get.
That's the base.
That is the base.
Yes. I was like, what's your smallest? And they said, I think it's either, is it 100? Yeah, it's like 100. Because, I'm sorry, I, I analyzed like four different softwares. One of them was like outrageous, it was like 100 gigabytes and it was super cheap. But then I realized it's because I'd have to do all the web stuff myself. So it's not just the storage you're paying for, you're paying for a lot of that support, a lot of the backups. And it would be, you know, and the archival level storage. So, right, so I will find out as much as I can and I will hopefully give you some kind of amount once we have the first like five photos.
Yeah.
Good question too. So when scanning the photos, wouldn't we want to have the highest possible resolution to preserve all the details of the photos?
So there's, there's a lot of formulas out there, especially like when you're talking.
And that will take space?
So depending on what year the photo was taken, with what level of camera, right? So something taken like the 1860s, I'm not going to need to scan it at the highest resolution because that would kind of be overkill, right? And there's, there's a lot of tools out there for folks that kind of tells you, okay, if you, if the photo was taken in this, these years, like scan it at this, right? Like it's pretty, yeah, so we won't be scanning everything at the highest resolution, probably just more of the modern photographs or something that's got extreme amounts of detail, because it's only going to be as good as the original, right? It's not going to fix a blurry piece of it. But, but yeah, we've, there's, there's different levels that we'll be scanning at. And each of those photos is going to vary in size too. Cause it's like we've got tiny ones and then we got giant ones. So the giant ones are obviously going to be larger.
I motion to approve the first two-year $14,000 request. I think it's innovative and provides accessibility, so I'm in support of this.
We put a stipulation on that? What, that, that the city and LSNS are responsible for coming up with the, at least 50% of the funds for the next renewal?
That's assuming we don't, we come back to you.
Cause. If, if at all.
The hope is we don't have to.
Right. Yeah, don't, don't come back to us at all if you can. Maximum of 50%. Does that, does that work or does somebody else want to put a higher or lower percentage on it? Is that, are we good with that? With that stipulation, I second.
Commissioner, trustee Benel, do you agree to that?
I'm thinking about it.
I haven't heard, I haven't heard that motion yet, so I don't think there's a second yet.
I mean, I don't think it's necessary. I, so I'm okay with committing to the entire five years, having trust that they will find the funding and that it will happen naturally. But I think no matter what, this is an important tool to put into place. So I'm okay with them funding it for five years, but I'm having 100% confidence that it's not going to be necessary. So that's just where I stand. But if the majority feel like they want to put the stipulation in, I'm fine with that because I have confidence that they're going to find the money.
So we vote on stipulation first?
I think I hear stipulation is included at this.
Okay, sounds good.
I'm so sorry.
Okay, thank you Zach.
And then I heard a second.
Yep.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion approved, 5-0.
Oh, y'all are going to love me today. All right. So I'm asking for more money. Yay! So on the heels of that, so we have a lot more outreach happening, which is amazing because we are really bouncing back from COVID heavily. I, we, Youth Services does tours pretty often, they're going out to schools, they're doing like back-to-school nights and Grand Avenue Fair and all these things. And in the past, we would give out little fun branded items, especially to kids. So like if you're at a booth or whatever, you know, oh, here's a pen with a library logo, whatever. So we blew through all the stuff we had. And I say blew through when really it probably took somewhere like five or six years to get through all of the backlog of stuff we had. And so now, we would like to replenish our branded items. And this is different from the ones that you approved before for sale. These are our fun giveaways that are part of our outreach and tours. And the, Avaline, who's our outreach coordinator, came up with a list of the different items and the quantities. And I guarantee it will last like probably longer than three years, but I was conservative in my estimate. And so we are requesting up to 4,000. Again, it's like 31 something, but I haven't put in the logo yet, so that will make the cart go up just a little bit. And it will, it will purchase coffee mugs, notebooks, pens, phone ring stands, like for the back of your phone and lanyards that are designed for our giveaways.
Just one question, are, are we asking for so many years' supply just so we get a good price on things?
It's because, yeah, so, so the way it works is whenever you, you go to a vendor where you have to set an image, like when you personalize a logo, every time you set an image, it costs money. So if you buy in bulk, it tends to be less expensive because for this whole order, I'm only paying for that one time. Additionally, they give you price breaks. So if you buy at least 250 of each item, it's like half of the cost of, less than 250 of the items. So we usually use Forimprint as our vendor and that's what we've been using for our regular sale items. And they've been really easy to work with, so.
Is this part of the giveaways that you guys give to the high school kids when you're at open house?
Yes.
Okay, I did see that that was a pop. Okay, I did see that that was a popular table visit because there were giveaways, so I'm in support of this.
We also give away candy.
Yeah.
But I won't ask you for candy.
And Forimprint, we use them a lot. I know that they're really low-priced, cost-effective and you get a lot for your money, so.
They're a great company. I love them.
I'm in support of this.
I move approval.
I second.
All those in favor? Motion approved, 5-0.
Can I pay for a mug? I really want a mug.
I don't know. I think we might be able to just give you one.
Oh, okay. Well, I did not base my vote on that answer, so for the record.
I was very tempted to say you would all get a mug. I thought that could be
Bribery.
So I withheld that, but I'm sure we can come up with those.
So what I'll do is when they come in, I will have you guys come by and you can take a look and see if any of the things catch your eye. The other part of this is we really want to start selling more items at the library. And this kind of gives us a good gauge of what items are popular. Because that's a whole nother process. We have to go to City Hall to get that on their like fee schedule. But this kind of gives us the opportunity to just try out like, hey, if we sell lanyards, will people buy them? Coffee mugs, pens? We don't know. Anyway, thank you.
Moving right along, um, so, uh, I, for the presentation for next week, I did, um, send this to both Dara and Katie and it got great feedback. And then I did send to Joanna as well. She is, I think, experiencing a family emergency at this moment, so, um, yeah, I, uh, she won't, she won't be here next week, I think. But she did spend a lot of time in reviewing this, so, um, it was very nice of her. So, uh, I was going to run through it and we can talk through any changes or updates that are needed. Um, and I'll just get started like you're the city council. So, uh, good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members. Thank you so much for inviting me to come speak today about the Escondido Library Board of Trustees. I'll start with some introductions and just let you know a little bit about the library. The primary mission of the Escondido Public Library of Trustees is to be vocal and energetic advocates for the essential services that the Escondido Public Library provides to our community and to give sound and timely advice and counsel to the Escondido City Council and the library director on the development of plans, policies and programs that are responsive to community needs and desires. Part of our board, our board consists of five members. The first trustee is Merrick Gorney. He has been an Escondido resident for 22 years and has served on the board for 12. He is a real estate broker, uh, member of the board for numerous Polish-American organizations, regional vice president for Polish-American Congress of Southern California and a soccer coach with the Escondido Soccer Club. Ron Giles moved to Escondido in 1967 and has been a resident ever since. He served on the board for nine years. And prior to retirement, Ron was the superintendent of the Escondido Union School District. Presently, he belongs to the Rotary Club of Escondido and is an officer on the board of the Foundation of the United Methodist Church of Escondido. Next is John Schwab. He has been an Escondido resident for 22 years and has served on the board for four. He spent 29 years in the aerospace industry in materials management, marketing, program management and software systems implementation. He is currently president of the Board of Directors of the Escondido Chamber of Commerce Charitable Foundation, member of the Grants Committee of the Escondido Community Foundation, member of Escondido Sunrise Rotary Club and ambassador for the Greater Escondido Chamber of Commerce. Next is our secretary, Virginia Benel. She has been an Escondido resident for seven and a half years and has served on the board for two. She is currently the head of people and development for Exelis Incorporated, which is a recent biotech spinoff of the San Diego Blood Bank. She is a member and secretary of the Board of Trustees of the Escondido Chamber of Commerce Charitable Foundation and a, she is a school site council member and parent representative for the Del Lago Academy High School. Finally, uh, is me, Carolyn Clemens, the president of the board. I have been an Escondido resident for 10, over 10 years and I have served on the board for four. Um, I'm a program manager for the engineering and defense firm Northrop Grumman and I recently served on the Escondido Independent Redistricting Commission. From this introduction, you can see that the board is diverse and has a wealth of knowledge to offer the council and its, in its execution of its responsibilities to advocate, advise and serve. In our advocacy, we publicly and enthusiastically support the library and its services to our community. In our advising role, we advise on direction the library should take. And above all, we serve our community by ensuring the library meets community standards. Our focus has been on equity, accessibility, inclusion and service. From an accessibility and equity perspective, the board removed media and borrowing fees, removed daily overdue fines and instituted automatic renewal in order to better meet the trend many other libraries in our county and beyond are taking to make borrow, borrowing easier for everyone. Removing the hurdle of payment for overdue fines ensures that everyone can continue to have access to the library's needed services regardless of their ability to pay. However, borrowers are still responsible for the payment of lost or damaged books. One of the biggest endeavors the board has undertaken was the creation in 2019 of the Strategic Planning Committee to develop the library's strategic plan for 2022 through 2027. Over 18 months in coordination with library systems and services and with the help of board members, community leaders, library staff, city staff and Escondido residents, we produced a plan that will cover the next five years of library execution. In establishing this committee, we wanted to ensure we heard from a diverse group of voices. The committee's focus was on gathering input and identifying the needs of the underserved Escondido communities. We developed and conducted a new comprehensive survey identifying Escondido Public Library strengths and opportunities for new services and programs as well as improving current programs as needed. We conducted 10 focus group meetings and with the help of Escondido Compact, were able to conduct five in Spanish, targeting the Escondido Latino community. The updated Escondido Library Strategic Plan will guide our library for the next five years. And part of its execution includes the library director updating the board on a monthly basis on progress. The library's accomplishments wouldn't be complete if we didn't mention COVID. When the library closed down in April 2020, there was much uncertainty over how we would continue to serve the community and meet the needs of residents who had large work-from-home or school-from-home challenges. In partnership with LSNS, we were able to understand best practices being implemented across the country. As a result, we instituted a curbside pickup for library material, something many libraries in the county did not make available until well into the pandemic. In addition, we made the library's Wi-Fi available in the parking lot for individuals who didn't have access at home, so they could use this in a socially distanced setting. Staff also adapted in-person programming to a virtual and eventually a hybrid environment, which actually resulted in an increase in the number of, in the number and diversity of participants in some programs. Because of LSNS and the library staff's quick pivot, we were able to get circulation back to pre-pandemic levels in just seven months while keeping our staff and community safe. Finally, the board would be remiss if we did not mention the success we've had in our library's transition to administration by LSNS. Library Systems and Services was created, are you okay? Was, has created a great partnership not only with the city but with the board, always accessible when the board has questions or needs. The board has relied multiple times on the invaluable expertise of the many librarians and professionals employed by LSNS. We also have executives present, executives present at board meetings and a regional director attend our meetings quarterly. This partnership has done wonders for our library, even providing funding to develop a plan to refresh the library spaces to better meet emerging needs. The board finds it an honor to participate in the great things, uh, coming out of our library, but we also recognize the challenges the library faces in meeting community needs. The first of those challenges is infrastructure. Did you know that on average, over 19,000 people visit the library in person on a monthly basis? That is almost 800 people per day. In a building that is over 40 years old, that visitation takes its toll. Plumbing issues, roof repair, HVAC problems and lighting needs are a few challenges that need to be addressed. Luckily, in 2022, we applied for and were granted a $10 million grant from the state of California to address these needed updates. However, there are many opportunities for improvement that still exist. Currently, the library is exploring how to maintain the various genealogical and historical records it has in the Pioneer Room. Cloud storage for these items is expensive and unruly to navigate. The library staff is looking into options as to how to make these records available to future generations in a searchable and permanent way while respecting the limited city resources available to fund these endeavors. Transitioning to the cloud and more digital content is a consideration in how to keep our library relevant. With the advent of digital content, many predicted that physical books would disappear. We are happy to say that is not the case. However, there are certain things that the community has come to depend on from the library outside of just books and media. In order to keep the library relevant, we need to ensure we continue to tailor programs to the community's desires, reinvigorate and modularize library space, implementing cutting-edge technology and identify opportunities for maintaining the library as a community hub for the future. The other challenge we face is continuing to increase accessibility of the library services. For a library with our utilization rate as well as our city's population, it is common for other satellite areas to exist. Currently, Palomar College's library is available to Escondido residents and we have a memorandum of understanding with them, which allowed the library foundation to provide improved furnishings to make it more comfortable for the larger public, as well as a social media campaign to alert residents that this benefit exists. However, the board and staff continue to explore ways to partner with local organizations to increase access. This includes the potential for library lockers in more remote areas of Escondido, a book more mobile or even a book vending machine. The board continues to be creative in how to serve our community. With every challenge comes an opportunity to succeed, but it requires vision to do so. After the strategic planning process was complete and reviewed by the board, the board undertook an effort to define the vision for a library of Escondido's future. The main tenets of this vision are to improve the current infrastructure of the library, expand services and accessibility, increase partnerships and eventually ensure that library services can continue to meet Escondido's needs for the next 40 years by building a new multi-use facility. From a current infrastructure perspective, I mentioned the grant and how that will enable us to patch holes in our current infrastructure. A redesign of the current spaces will allow for co-work rooms, meeting rooms, modern stacks and will bring the library out of 1981. Expanding services and accessibility will allow us to decrease the travel time it takes for those getting to the library or even allow for the library to come to them. We would like to increase bilingual offerings to increase inclusivity, hire a full-time social work to help, social worker to help our patrons experiencing homelessness and expand Wi-Fi, Bluetooth and cloud storage capabilities. The board continues to look into expanding partnerships and identify ways in which the library can assist, can assist in city priorities. This includes reaching out to senior centers, county administration branches, charter schools, the Escondido History Center and the Children's Museum. Ultimately, the board believes that in order to maintain our services, Escondido must put forth the effort to build a new library. Above all though, the board does not feel Escondido will need to go this alone. By identifying partnerships of parties interested in sharing space, costs can be shared as well. As you are aware, the board is made up of accomplished members who are innovative, have vision and overall have a passion for making not only the library succeed, but have a passion for ensuring the community can succeed as well. The board believes the library has a special role in helping it do so. Thank you again so much for your time and I am pleased to answer any questions you may have. Any input?
The only thing that, uh, that the, the words are perfect, okay? After, can you back up a couple of slides? Next. Okay. You spent a lot of time talking about strategic plan and COVID stuff. And there was, there was something after that that I thought needed another slide. LSNS. I thought, I thought it needed its own slide.
A blurb.
Something.
Okay. All right, so I'll, I'll, um, I'll update this with a blurb for LSNS, this one. Okay, 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 good, good, okay.
And I have a nitpicky one. We actually closed Mar, it was March 16th of 2020, so.
What's that?
They, they closed the library.
Okay. And I, I do remember, Dara, that you called me, um, April, May, okay? And said, hey, could we do automatic renewal, renewal on a trial basis while COVID's going along? And I said, sure, why not? Okay.
Is he now?
Good job.
Yeah, that's great.
Yes.
I think that'd be great.
I was wondering too.
Yeah.
We should be all there.
Yeah, you guys can sit in the, the row. I can point
I'll, I'll reserve the front row.
Oh, perfect.
Okay, good, yeah.
Great. Good. Okay, and then as far as the banners go, right? So I, I made this number up. I just guessed 150 years. That sounds a lot, like a lot because I'm sure you have at least 40, 40, 30, 10 and 20. I don't know. Does that work? Okay.
Yeah.
All right.
No one's going to ask.
Okay, yeah, right, right. Where did 150 come from? Okay, and then, um, so in the Escondido community survey, we had a satisfaction rate of 79%. My like A-plus brain doesn't want to put that number. Exactly. Yes, but it's actually very good, right? It's very good. But I wanted to say we're the fourth most approved because after like the police and fire and I don't know, one more, then it's us, so.
Makes sense to me.
Okay, so fourth versus 79%, yeah? Okay, okay. And then, um, I really like, so I read this to my husband as we were going through it and he was like, when I said, you know, over 800 people a day, he was like, it like totally caught him off guard. He was like, are you seri, like, are you joking me? That is, like, he had no idea. So I'm hoping to elicit that same kind of reaction from the public. But, um, I took this, um, 348,371 from the, um, annual report. Yeah, okay. Okay, well, great. Thanks for your input.
Great job, Carolyn.
Very good, great. Yeah, so that's the difference. So I just looked at the most recent, um, I looked at the most recent, um, stats and just like did an eye shot and said 19, 22, 19. You know, we fluctuate, but I went more conservative.
I also take, took a look when you sent it to me and it's, it's pretty close to the average if you look at the whole year.
Okay.
Like there's some months where we have over 1,000 a day and there's some months where we have like around 700 to 900, but.
Yeah. And this was 2021, so my figure is more up to date with 2023, almost, 2022-ish. Okay, all right. Okay, thank you.
It's certainly the most visited facility in Escondido.
Oh, yeah, and putting that mural on it helped more. Okay.
And the water department window.
Oh, 1,800 a day, okay. Oh, really? More than, oh, we always see people. Okay. Um, transitioning to the director's report.
Sorry, we got distracted. We're trying to do math for January. So just to give you an idea, in January, we had 17,981, or sorry, 988 people in the library. So we're getting back there to all of our pre-COVID numbers, which is great. Um, in fact, in January, Youth Services continues to hold their storytimes, rhymes and readings, toddler tales and baby lap sit. Toddler Tales is now being offered twice a week because the attendance was so high. We're getting an average of 90 people each storytime. Um, and in January, we had 180 in the month of January 4th. That's toddler storytime. Or I'm sorry, that's 180 a week. So our numbers are definitely getting back up there. January 17th was another highlight. We had our Lunar New Year celebration with the lion dancers. We had 170 people there for that. Our ESL classes are filling up. In fact, we're seeing two of our Level 1 classes already filled. And, uh, we have six students who have graduated the Level 2 class. The students and staff are very excited for the semester of learning. We are growing because of the ESL program. We're working on hiring yet one more person after the other three we've already, you know, taken on since receiving that fund. And Adult Services hosted a new wellness program and that is part of the new strategic, or the strategic plan to, um, have more of a focus on wellness. And this is a meditation program that happens twice a month. In the first month, the, they've had Um, in their first month, the, they've had 10 and then 17 attendees, so it looks like that's going to be successful, and we're hoping it grows. Uh, we also had the ongoing programs, like the Second Saturday Concert with 36 people, um, in attendance, and that is another program that reminds me, we do still film that one because we have, um, at least one, there were two, um, area, um, uh, living, assisted living centers that were streaming it live so that their, um, residents could watch it. So that's one, we're going to continue to do that as a hybrid. Um, and we hosted our semi-annual succulent swap, and that had 150 attendees. And our writers group is currently, um, they just wrapped up their annual writing competition, and, um, the winners will be announced later in February. Oh, did you come up with it?
No.
Oh.
Any questions? No? Alright. Thanks, Dara.
You're welcome, thank you.
Okay, well, with that, um, we'll go around the room, um, and, uh, discuss anything that, um, you'd like to share about the library or anything else, so Virginia, we'll start with you.
Kedok, I have three things that I want to talk about. Um, I'm really happy that you guys are honoring Black History Month with your book, um, what are those called? The book, Highlights Displays, yeah, so thank you for, um, participating in that. And then I was so excited to see that, uh, you guys are now offering the California Park passes to be checked out and used. I think that's amazing, benefit to the community, so great job.
Yeah.
Right, yeah, so that, that's an awesome service. I hope, um, people really take advantage of that. Um, I thank you, Dara, for hosting, myself and my family, for the Pioneer Tour I just took on Monday. Yeah, so it was awesome. I have my in-laws visiting, um, and so I was able to bring them along, and they enjoyed it. I think that's been the highlight of their trip so far, but, um, uh, we, it is very important to learn about what the Pioneer Room does, holds, and the great resource it is for Escondido. And so, um, I just wanted to thank you that we really enjoyed that.
Well, I, I had a, uh, a request to meet with Kent Baker, who's on the Historical Society. So all the stuff we talked about today was very relevant. I can, I have a little more knowledge now to talk back, to explain to him what we're doing. I think they're in a little bit of transition over there, and, uh, this is very important to those people on, on the board, but, uh, I, I think we'll get a little more cleric, clarity as they transition into whatever they're going to become, but, uh, i- it's interesting. But I do know, just from friends of mine, people that have lived in Escondido forever, who could, could really help us, once we get something, if we market it, I think we won't have any money, any trouble raising funds, so that's, that's good to know. I was just in the library, uh, before I came here. I just think it looks so good. I mean, there was 15 people on computers, I counted them. There was probably 25 on wireless, their own wireless. Uh, there were people in the quiet room. It is the way I envision a library should be. It's the way libraries were when I was a kid, and so I'm, I'm just very pleased. I'd like to get more of the community to walk through our library, just to see what I saw today. It's really good.
Did you notice the carpets were really clean, too?
Yeah.
That happened on Sunday.
I, uh, was, over the last month, spending some time on this, so I didn't actually make it into the library, but, um, I do still have six books checked out. And, uh, I just wanted to say that, one of the books I'm reading right now, it's about America's involvement in Iran in, from like the 1700s to the present, and I had no idea of that history at all. Um, so it's just kind of a testament to what you can discover in the library, and, you know, the knowledge you can find and understand how it impacts what's going on today.
So I was over, uh, at the library earlier today, returning a book and getting some others, and I finally found a place to park after about five minutes.
That's good.
So I asked when I left, what's going on today? They said, oh, it's, uh, the, uh, you had a reading thing.
Was it this morning?
Uh, yeah, late this morning.
It was probably, what day is it? It's Thursday, it's probably Toddler Tales, because it gets super busy.
Yeah.
Yeah, there's just like parents and kids and grandparents just everywhere.
Yeah, I had to design my own parking place over by the, the workout center.
Oh.
But it's real, it's great to see that.
Yeah.
Um, I just, I come by the library with my son, you know, he likes, he likes to visit the children's sections, and I just, I, I say it every time, but just, I want to compliment you on the way it's run, and the way it looks, and the way it, that's, it's still there, we can go there and enjoy it, and, and kids do their homework even there, so that's, that's awesome, thank you.
Okay, well, with that, I will adjourn our meeting. Yay.